All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Rhinebeck Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting for June 19th, 2024. And we have four folks here, so we have a quorum. Did everybody get a chance to review the meeting minutes from the meeting of May 15, 2024? Any corrections, concerns, questions?
I provided some comments. I didn't look at the revised ones.
Yeah, I just changed those things. And thank you, Kim. Okay, hearing nothing, I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes with the corrections suggested by Kim. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. So you'll abstain? Okay, so we have three ayes, and it passes, great. Okay, so that brings us to the first application, and that is the application of Michael West.
Say, I'm up to the mic.
Come on up, come up to the mic, and you have some experience in these matters. One thing, I'm gonna embarrass Mr. West here. He served on this court for a brief period of time, 27 years, I think it was.
Yeah, something like that.
So, you know, that should be acknowledged. The public doesn't know a lot of the public service that goes on with folks. It's anonymously done, but 27 years is a hell of a long time, and I just want to acknowledge Michael for that.
I loved every minute of it. That was great.
It was. And the one person that beat you was Dave Fowler, who fled 30 years ago.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. But they just couldn't get rid of me.
No, well, you fled after 27 years, so.
Right.
Anyway, so tell us about your application then.
Well, I would like to build an accessory structure up behind my house. It's something I've been planning for many years. I'm finally getting around to it now that I'm sort of semi-retired. I am aware that it's been designed with larger square footage. I'm also in height that was allowed by law, but I think I can make a pretty good case for why I need it to be that way. It's actually smaller than what I would really like to have. I redesigned this thing several times, trying to cut it down to something that would be more palatable to the board. But this one structure needs to replace my shop that I rented in Kingston. I've been renting a woodworking shop and a whole factory within there for about the last 13 years or so. And I've outgrown that. Rents go up, price of gas and tolls. I really need to have my shop at my house. So about three, oh, and also it's going to replace my two-car garage, which will be converted into more living space, and it will replace my shed.
Is the shed going, or is it?
The shed's going, yeah. As soon as I have a place to put my shed stuff in this new structure, then the shed will be demolished. I, about three years ago, I acquired another half acre of land from a neighbor, because although I already had about four acres or so, there was no perfect place to build this barn, where it wouldn't be in everybody's face. You know, my neighbors, right now, my land is a strip that kind of protects them from the 308. So the perfect place was up behind the house, pardon me, and I didn't own that land, so I arranged with Paulman Driscoll to acquire a half an acre of fur land and clear the trees so I can build it up there. Won't be seen from the road, won't be seen by any of the neighbors, and I think it's not my neighbor, it isn't that neighborhood.
Do you have any, I know you gave us some information on what it's gonna look like, but do you have any renderings?
No.
We typically have been asking for renderings for color and that kind of stuff, just to see what it is.
Well, I did build a little model of it. This, pass this around if you want. Kind of an unusual shaped building. It's a little different, I know. I have a degree in theatrical set design, so I thought I would give a little theatrical with this. The oval shaped is a silo that the lower level is a two-car garage, and then above it is my office.
Above the two-car garage?
Right, the top part of the oval, of the elliptical shape. And then on the ground floor, I'll have a woodworking shop, and also space to work on the carts. I have three old vintage carts that I need to have space to work on, so that's why the footprint is as big as it is. And then on the upper level, the one with the dormer, that will be a clean space where I will work on guitars. I restore guitars and I build new ones, and so I need a clean space on the upper level away from the woodworking shop.
And these are great, but do you have, you know, can you supply, so typically we ask for renderings just to show the color and what it's gonna look like, the property and that kind of stuff?
Sure, I'll make sure you have one.
Because, I mean, we're gonna be obviously coming out and doing the site inspections, you know, and everything's staked out, I presume, and all that, a little bit, yeah. But we really need to have, and it's like I said, this is a great start, we just need to have the color it's gonna be and generally what the layout looks like now, you know, the house, where, you know, and where this is gonna be, and see if we can take photographs and things like that, just give us an idea of what we're, or getting into, what you wanted to do. Again, just color renderings, and if you can, place this as best you can, or typically people have something to do it for, it's pretty easy to do, just, you know, place the thing approximately where it's gonna be on the property, just so we have an idea.
I think you should have a map that shows tonight how the building is placed in relationship to my house.
We do, but the rendering, kind of like, pretend that it's already built, when you take a picture of it.
Oh, like a three-dimensional?
Yeah. And Gretchen has lots of examples of that stuff, because we require it against every other application, but it just gives us a better idea of what it's gonna look like.
And in your application, you mentioned that there are some similarly sized accessory structures, I think, around?
Yes.
If you have any examples that might be helpful for the board to look at.
Okay. Yeah, there are a number of barns up and down 308, across, you know, Brolin Becher, behind, you know, agricultural buildings that are bigger and taller than what this will be.
And that would be great, because, you know, we can make reference to that. A lot of times we do that with signs, a lot of different properties, and, you know, if you can show that all the signs are bigger than, or are the same size as what you're asking for, it makes it easier for us. So if there's bars in the area that are bigger, taller, similar size, whatever, that's awesome, too, that gives us the information that's helpful.
So with your shop, so yours, this will still be a shop, business shop, in the sense that, I know you said you're semi-retired, but this will be part of your, of your planning scheme here?
Yes. I build guitars and I do a lot of work for, you know, well, not just guitars, any kind of musical instrument, I fix amplifiers, I did a keyboard for the Clubhouse Studio recently. People bring me things that need to be restored or repaired or whatever, and, yeah, that's where I'll, it's not, not like I'll be open to the public and I'll have people coming in and out of the barn. Usually I will go to a guitar shop and pick up a guitar that needs to be repaired, and then I'll return it to them, so I don't think very many people will be coming in and out of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured, but I think, so I did have a question if this was a home occupation, which, you know, usually means that you're doing, you're conducting your business, even if it's not people coming in and out, you're still conducting part of your business as a property. So Rhinebeck has two classes of home occupations. They have a class one and a class two. Class one, it means that it's conducted entirely in your existing home, and that's permitted in just about every residential zone. Class two means that it's conducted in an accessory structure, and it requires a special use permit from the planning board. I did mention this to Brian Tam, so I can kind of talk with him a little bit more about that, but you might need a special use permit from the.
So I need to go before the planning board for that.
For a special use permit? And there are some restrictions. Again, I just kind of looked into the class two. So how much, do you happen to know how much of the floor area will be for the guitar
Yes, it's not the lion's share. Lion's share of the floor plan is actually for my cars, but I think I have a drawing that separates it out, and I can make sure that you have that for the next public hearing. It's a relatively small area. I think, I think it was something like 430 square feet on the lower level for the woodworking shop, and about the same above for the air. And I'll make sure I get those numbers exact.
Yeah, so for the, for our home occupation, I, again, I can double check with Brian, but I, it was, it says that the home occupation shall not occupy more than 25% of the total floor area of the accessory structure, which, based on the 1953 square footage, I calculated that to be 488, roughly, 48.25. So might need another area variance for the, if it's both the upper and the lower together?
Yeah, we could add that, right?
Yeah, yeah, just, we can just add that to, we just wanna make sure that you get every, all the variance that you would even want in this shop. And then the other thing I saw was that it said that the class two home occupation shall meet the minimum lot area of the zone. Your zone's five acres, with the extra half acre you got, is 4.33?
Yes.
So might need a variance for minimum lot size to allow it to be that five acres. I'll write to Brian and just ask him to confirm that, but.
My, what question? Do we take the hundred square feet out from the shed, does that reduce down what's requested?
Well, it's because what's, you mean the 1953? I think that's just, that's, that's the accessory structure. Oh, so, so Brian's determination letter calculated that 1940, 1953, so then the area variance was for regarding the square footage, gross square footage of the accessory structure was 453, so that's accurate. This would be for the home occupation element of it. Like I said, I'm trying to touch the, upon it a little bit with Brian today. I can just kind of reach out to him just to see if he can agree to those numbers.
Questions, concerns?
I think on the floor plan, it would be nice if they were like, what section was being used for what, particularly for this discussion?
Yes, earlier version, it did say this one, that's it. This is like the third revision. And you said this would, replace the need of your garage now? Yes, I have an attached garage.
Attached?
And I'm gonna convert that into a living space. I mean, it's a useless garage anyway. I can't really work in it, it's too tight for me to work on with the cars that need to be worked on, so, yeah, and I need more interior space in my house, so convert that and replace it with this. In this building, there'll be a garage for three cars that you work on, and then two cars that you correct, that you drive every day, you know, two daily drivers, and then three vintage guitars, cars.
So five cars total?
All the downstairs space is cars? Is it limited to cars?
Well, not all of it, but.
Well, the lion's share of the first floor is all cars. Two cars is a part here, and then three cars that'll be worked on, the rest of that.
And maybe I wasn't hearing, is any floor that we're working on gonna be done on the ground floor as well?
Yes, that's, that's this room right here.
Oh, the other one was the height?
Right. Yeah, the height has to do with the silo. And originally, just for aesthetics, I wanted the roof of the silo to be above the roof line of the rest of the structure, but to lower it down, I integrated the roof lines together, which is not what I really wanted, but it's a way of getting the height down. I also wanted higher ceilings originally. I wanted 12-foot ceilings, which are ideal for a woodworking shop, and I compromised and cut it, cut it down to 10 to reduce the overall height, and another couple feet, and still I'm over, but I can't go any lower, but.
So how much are you over?
About eight feet.
So the silo's 28 feet, three inches.
Yeah, so eight feet, three inches.
Yeah. So 20, so accessory structure's height limit's 20 feet, so eight feet, three inches.
But again, the more structures that are in the area where they're that high or higher, makes it less of a, a issue.
And I can't emphasize enough the fact that it won't be seen by anybody. There's even a big ridge of rock behind my house that separates the house and the barns, so that.
Google it.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely, that's why we'll do the site inspection, because that's, the topography is crucial a lot of times.
See what balloon you're on, future.
The what?
A balloon. Remember when I had, I'm sorry.
Yes, 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 I remember that. That's right.
That was very helpful.
It was very helpful.
Where's the 10-foot ceiling, in the silo here, or the, on the lower level?
Oh, in the workspace on the lower level?
In the workspace.
That's not the garage?
Right.
Which is here?
Yes.
But that's 10-foot.
To lower the volume?
Thanks. I'll, I'll do a rendering for you, though. I should have done one, but it's not.
We didn't require it for you back in the day, because this, this, we've been doing this for the last couple of years, which has been very, very helpful. But things have changed a little bit since we were on the board, so. Any other questions, concerns? All right, I think we have enough information to accept the application, but we're gonna need to have the additional stuff before the public hearing, and actually, Gretchen, this might have to have the additional information to you, or tell us.
I'd say at least a week before public hearing.
I didn't hear that.
At least a week before the public hearing, July 17.
Okay, a week before.
Okay, so save it then.
If you could just send me a little note about the use variance and any other thing that's been discussed, and then I'll try to cover it all. I think I have it all written down, but just to be sure, I don't miss something.
The renderings are key, and then getting the information about other structures in the area that are comparable size, height, that kind of stuff. Let's get the.
Floor plans, label the floor.
Label the floor plan, which you probably already have, yeah.
Well, I think Catherine wanted the labeling where, like, the office will be, labeling where the cars will be, labeling.
You could just do a digital, I don't think you can read print.
No.
Just like the digital.
Okay, any more concerns, questions? Okay, so again, I make a motion to accept the application subject to receiving the additional information. Plan, second? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Okay, so we're gonna set this down for a public hearing on July 1st, and you can be here for a second. Great, and we just need that stuff a week before, once the public hearing, typically what we've been doing is, we get to public hearing, and then after that, we go out and do a special, because if you want to hear, if there is any public comment, we want to do a public comment before we go out, maybe for the subject, but at the public hearing will, hopefully, if we're on the dates to go out, pretty early on, Saturday, because we do it, and we'll be in your home, and.
Sounds good. And I'll get a list of all the neighbors that I need to contact?
I'll send you all, yeah.
All right. Great, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, towards the end.
It looks like a great project.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
It's definitely fun.
All right, so we have some, some housekeeping on this side, so we'll determine whether we need to cover the area, if this is correct.
Yeah, so yeah, I'll, I'll go down to Brian. Like, I know he, I know that the building department's a bit, they have a lot of work going on, so it's kind of a court, big turn, so I'll see if I can get us to specify that.
So according to the cheat sheet here, our council has suggested that this application be labeled a type two under seater under section 617.5C17, which seems appropriate. Make a motion that we deem it to be a type two under 617.5C17. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, and it's just plenty of work that gets out of the quorum. All right. Who would like to be lead on this? Catherine?
No one?
No fight?
No, no fight.
No waggling is here? Okay. Is that it? Kim, have we missed anything?
No.
Okay, good. That's it?
I'm trying to schedule the site visits before public hearing.
I'd say we could probably do them, I like to do them afterwards, so I can hear the public if the public has any concerns, so we can focus in on whatever the concerns are. All right. So I understand that the next matter that's on is, and I apologize if I mispronounce it, Tanmay and Chavi? I apologize to the applicant, but I understand that has been withdrawn. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that. And that brings us to Brookmead.
Good evening. My name's Sean Kemp. I represent Brookmead. In connection with this appeal from a notice of apparent violation that was issued by Brian Tam on April 4th, 2024, in the notice of apparent violation, Mr. Tam claims that Brookmead's hosting a community event for the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce violated special permits and accessory uses that were granted from the planning board. So in connection with that appeal, I submitted a cover letter. I plan on supplementing that. I know that there's probably many people that are part of the public that would like to weigh in on this as well, because there's quite a bit of concern that Brookmead was basically granted permission to build a building that's approximately 18,000 square feet, contains a community room that's approximately 4,000 square feet, but the interpretation that Mr. Tam is trying to enforce would render that community space in large part useless. So we're coming to the ZBA seeking further clarification as to what exactly Brookmead accessory uses consist of. In the initial application that was made to the planning board, there were various types of uses that were identified by the applicant in Brookmead, and among those were, you know, voting, which many of you might know that they've used the pavilion and the community room specifically for voting, blood drives, flu clinics, things of that nature. They also identified civic organizations, fundraising, things of that nature. And if, I think that there's a little concern from some people in the town, maybe on the planning board, I'm not entirely sure, but that there's like some type of commercial enterprise that's being run over there. That's not the case. This is really to make this space available for the community and to put it to its highest and best use, which is what was initially contemplated when Brookmead made its application to the planning board. From the time of the approval to now, there's, you know, obviously, there's been some type of miscommunication. I've attempted to contact the town regarding that issue to see if we could work through where this is coming from. There wasn't really much of a willingness on the town's part, and that's, that's fine. I think that they think that the ball is best in your court, and that's why I'm before you tonight.
Right, the Good Egg Award, I mean, very familiar with that, president of the Chamber of Commerce.
Sure.
And been very involved in it, but, you know, that's not a commercial enterprise, that's, that's their, one of the meetings they do in January, I think, is typically.
Typically, yeah, so the Good Egg Award was typically in January, then what they did, Scott, they made the Good Egg Award its own event, and then they had the state of Rhinebeck. They still do that, but it's kind of, they kind of made it a little bit briefer, so that it wasn't such a long night, but the spirit of the Good Egg Award is to acknowledge.
It's a chamber event?
It's a chamber event, community event, much like other fundraising events that take place throughout the town.
Do you have, I mean, I cited something, but are there, has there been a course of conduct over years of various things, you know, such as the blood drives, some of that kind of stuff, that's been done without incident?
Correct, yes, we do. The Repair Cafe is another thing that takes place over there without incident. In fact, I don't believe there's been any complaints from the public regarding the use, but there's some complaints coming from somebody within the town, we believe, which is fine, but I think that what we really want to do is to kind of lay out, and I do plan on supplementing my materials, to say, these are the events that we've done historically without incident.
That would be helpful.
And these are, you know, the things that we think that we should be able to do, because it's consistent with that. We're not, you know, running a commercial restaurant that's open to the public. Mr. Tam's letter references a letter that I wrote to Andrea Gellin regarding no further, I forget exactly what was claimed in the letter, but something about unauthorized or illegal uses. That was with respect to a claim that was being made that Art's Cafe, which was approved by the planning board, was being open to the public, and, you know, we were trying to get people from the village to come over there and have lunch and things like that, so we made sure that there was no longer, like, general solicitations or advertisements that were going out, and everything has been targeted towards the community.
So then for the residents, basically?
That, it's for the residents, and for people that happen to be, it's, I think that it's kind of equivalent to the cafeteria at Northern Dutch Hospital, with one caveat is that there's a lot of people at Brookmead that are older, obviously, some of them have disabilities, aren't able to get along, get around very easily, but they don't necessarily want to be stuck in one room when their family visits them. So the idea was that this would be a space that residents would be able to get to, it's all level entryways, there's no steps, things like that, trees, uprooting sidewalks, don't have to worry about that, and then they'd be able to have lunch or breakfast with their loved ones. So that's the other purpose of Art's Cafe, but it, you know, certainly people that work there and that are there on a consistent basis can go and eat there as well.
It just says, I'm looking at the letter, it's May 11th, 2022. Who is Andrea writing on the pad of?
So I, I believe that letter was my letter to, to Andrea. Andrea Gellin was representing the town at the time, because there was a different notice of violation, I believe, that was issued by Michael Trimble, and.
I didn't, I didn't know she was town attorney, or?
Yeah, I think, I think she's, she apparently is the one that made the.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't believe, I thought it was board.
He's the town board attorney, I think she's like Justice Court.
This was like an enforcement.
Okay.
So at the time, the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School was a. So at the time, the Ryanbeck Community Nursery School was applying for a special permit because originally Brookmead had gotten permission to have like an exercise center there, and that wasn't necessarily the best use for that space. And Ryanbeck Community Nursery School was leaving the church, and they needed a new space. This ended up fitting nicely, and that's, that's how that, this all came up.
So is the question before the board about the notice of apparent violation specifically about the Good Egg as an event being held, or is it just an actual request for interpretation as to what is allowed as an accessory use?
It would be the law.
Okay.
I think we really want to get to a point to say, Brian Zaden, he's the administrator for Brookmead, he's here. I think I want to get him to a point where he doesn't have to pick up the phone and always be like, hey, can I do this? Because they want to be good members of the community, and they are good members of the community. They're great members of the community. Anybody that has had a little one that played soccer, or like I said, the voting and things like that, they're always there to step up to the plate that's Brookmead. That's just the way that they are. Top shelf organization, it's an asset to our community. You don't have to look very far to see that, you know, Thompson House shut down recently, so there's a real need for it. And we should be doing whatever we tend to embrace, the things that they want to do to better our community. That's why we're respectfully requesting the board's assistance in making this determination.
I'm not familiar with the Good Egg. Would you just provide a little bit more moderation on that?
Sure. Like Scott, I was a president of the Chamber of Commerce for some time. The Good Egg Award essentially recognizes members of the community that go above and beyond in volunteering and being good community leader and really being selfless. So Judge Sanchez was an honorary, I know. Colleen Crookshank, the past executive director, was.
The group who might have been in there and all kinds of people like that.
Yeah.
Al West would have been a good person to do that to.
Yeah, very interesting fellow. Yeah. So we try to recognize the people that helped make Ryanbeck what it is. And a lot of that comes from people just being good-hearted and, you know, doing the right thing and stepping up to the plate with their volunteer hours and, you know, helping out wherever they can. Greg Raykow was another honorary that comes to mind, but it's been going on for quite some time now. Historically, it was done at Beacon Arms.
Right.
The same night as.
The state of.
The state of Ryanbeck dinner. But then we started to get some complaints that the event was running too long because the state of Ryanbeck has the local politicians.
And you can't shut them off, people know, he, he, he said little signs, five minutes and they just wouldn't listen.
Yeah. So they broke it up and, under the idea that they could have community events, civic-oriented events there, and it's a beautiful space. I know, I don't know if it's, this appeal gives the board an opportunity to go and actually see the space, but if it does, I'll do whatever I can to help arrange, you know, a site visit. I think it's extremely important that you can see the value of this space and how it can be put to use, a good use. And again, this is not to turn it into some profit center for Brookmead, but it's certainly, there's no reason to have this room empty all the time. Especially, the Repair Cafe is another example of something that used to be done, I believe, in town hall, and now it's moved, it's moved out there.
So the public goes to the events, any advertisements or any rental fees or anything?
I think that there's a small site fee in, that I think is waivable sometimes, depending on what the organization is, what the event is. But generally, all the events are, the Good Egg Award, for instance, anybody from the community could go to that event.
And it's advertised by the Chamber of Commerce, I think?
Yeah, you know. And then occasionally, there's like a soup for seniors, soup and sandwich.
The SAS program.
The SAS program, where seniors get to come out. They don't necessarily have to be Brookmead, this is just an opportunity for our seniors to be able to go out and meet and interact with one another. And I think that it's fair to say that that level of interaction is important for people as they age. It's kind of a no-brainer type thing, as well as, you know, occasionally, I think they do like either a spring bake sale or Easter, it might be Easter cookies sale.
There are a lot of fundraisers, you know.
Why don't you come on up?
Yeah, sorry.
Can you introduce yourself?
Sure.
You're on camera, so you can just let us know what else they do.
I'm Brian Zaden, the administrator for Meadows. I also oversee the pavilion as well. The pavilion has a medical model and social model adult bake program. We take up to forty-five registrations this fall. Essentially providing daytime services for those that need assistance and they have caregivers that need respite. And then we have the Arts Cafe, and we have the, I'm sorry about the name of the stuff. And we have the community center too, where, you know, we're talking about the events and the Good Egg that took place. And we have the Ryanbeck Community Nursery School, another not-for-profit within, within the building, which worked out beautifully. We have Ryanbeck at Home with Nine Inch, she has one of the office spaces in the building as well. And then hopefully the other office will be with office for the aging or some other kind of servers that could be useful to the community. So good story building, plus with the parking lot meant to be very accessible. But we do a lot of fundraising events who are not-for-profit. I've been there for nine years full-time and thirteen or fourteen years ago, part-time when I was in school. The, you know, we have the Brookmead Bakery, so we do some fundraising with bake sales. We have a pickup fundraiser where we, you know, make some culinary foods where it's a fundraiser as well. Our galas, our annual galas, and our golf classic that we just had at the Reddick Golf Course. But yeah, we've done various handy socials, a variety of things. We have Family Fun Day. And some of the programs we have are, you know, not fundraisers, but we do accept donations or sponsorships like SAS, our soup and sandwich program. So essentially, you know, you want to tackle one of the problems of the community, which is seniors of any demographic or economic status, you know, dehydration and nutrition values does suffer when you're senior in communities and when you're isolated. So we wanted to provide socialization and engagement while giving a sandwich and a soup. We do that the first Thursday of the month, and so we have a huge following. I don't know what answer to the question.
No, no, yeah, and that general function will augment that with all the different things that you've done over the years.
Yeah.
Which is nice to have the laundry list of the events that have been.
And that's exactly what I'll put together for the, for the public hearing. Assuming that the application or the appeal is sufficient to be accepted for.
I will be making that motion momentarily, but then I'll ask my board members, any questions, concerns?
I have a question. So just trying to, so Brookmead accepts a rental fee for most of these things?
Well, not the, not the ones, most of the events are put on by Brookmead itself, so there's no fee for that. I just didn't want to say, for instance, with the Chamber, I'm not entirely sure if there was a, a small fee that you can speak to that.
Yeah, there's some events where we may have to do a charge, like utility costs, just the, you know, we have our staff setting up and, you know, decorating or using utilities or having things on our, we have to be able to offset some of that cost that we put towards an event for a third party.
But you wouldn't call it a money-making?
Absolutely not. I mean, I mean, if the, if local antique groups wanted to do a little antique fair,
would you rent the space to them?
It would really depend. That's when I'll call Sean and say, is that okay? So right now, we do turn, you know, we do get phone calls without any advertisements for a lot of different events that I know wouldn't fit into this category, so we just simply say, unfortunately, this time we can't accommodate that. And those events would be probably very helpful for us revenue-wise, but we, I'm sure we could.
So, so the fees they could charge basically cover your costs?
Yeah, it covers cost. We did a very conservative charge for, it was like utilities, it was off-hours where we have to have staff to keep the building open, just to be not completely operating the negative. And I could look at my finance report to speak to it better.
So what's your criteria for deciding whether you can, under your personal opinion of your approach on that?
So I've, I've been taking a very conservative approach in effort to avoid any friction with the town. I certainly thought that the Good Egg Award was a no-brainer, to be quite honest with you. So what I would look at typically were civic-oriented events, not-for-profit events that would fall into that type of category. Perhaps a private birthday party, not so much, you know, being, whether or not it actually consists of an accessory use, I would say that it does, but, or an approved use, rather, but for the purposes of my discussions with Brian, it's like, let's just avoid those, these are very clear. And part of that was based on my conversations with Michael Trimble.
So if someone came to you and they wanted to use this space or something like Richard was saying, an antique fair, where it's designed for them to make money, you would say no?
Right now, yes.
But the party concept is interesting. I mean, if somebody came to, you know, like, it's a big space, so.
It's a great space.
It'd be great. I mean, if, but is it, can you have that? If somebody wanted to be safe and have a New Year's Eve party and have everybody just vote, would you rent?
I think that they should be able to do that. And I think that.
But there would be a charge.
There'd be a charge, yeah. And I think that the prom.
Right, yeah.
Could go there.
Uh-huh.
And that's why I really want you to see the space. It's, you know, I love the Legion, and I've been, you know, there many times.
Yeah.
But this space is a little bit, you know, a step up from, from what the Legion has to offer. And I really do think sincerely that an event like that is exactly what this, would fit very nicely in this space. I've kind of been cautious and conservative with respect to the uses because we knew that there's this issue on the radar of the, of the town. Michael Trimble had issued the letter, we sat, we met with him, tried to go through, he was very helpful, and kind of set out some goalposts that seemed to make sense at the time. But now, this is a much more restrictive interpretation that Tam is taking with, with the uses, which would really, it would, it would harm Brookmead, and it would render the previous approvals basically meaningless. Like, okay, we have this great space, can't do anything with it.
Do you have any documentation from your discussions with Mike Trimble? You know, you indicated that he gave you general forever, as it sounds like, back in like twenty-two.
Yeah.
In the last situation. Do you, any memorandums from him, any documentation, anything that would give us some kind of?
No, it was just a conversation that we had, and it was Brian, myself, Mr. Trimble, and Andrea Gellin at my office. I, I might have like handwritten notes, but there was nothing that was actually issued from.
From Mike?
And he was the zoning, he was the acting zoning enforcement officer at the time. Just so that we know, I know he's worn a lot of different hats.
Yeah.
But that's what he was, you know, that's how he was wearing when we had that meeting. But I don't have anything official that was.
So you're, just, just to summarize, and if it's got me too far, please let me know, but so your, your current view is that you've been doing more civic-oriented, community-oriented activities, usually don't charge to be just anything to make just cover overhead charges. But you'd like to continue that and maybe use more, more commercialized views, like Richard was saying, would be an antique, a party.
Just add it in the concerts.
I mean, that would be a wonderful, wonderful venue for something like that. And I would, to your point, I would, now that I'm before the board, yeah, I'm going to try and ask for, I don't want it to turn into like a commercial enterprise, I just want the space to be put to good use, and the community needs a space. I don't know where else you can go in this area and get a space, access to a space like that. There's nowhere. There really truly is nowhere. And we're in a unique position to take advantage of that space, whether it's, you know, for the antiquers or for the people that want to have a safe New Year's party or whatever it might be, the prom is a very, you know, legitimate use, I think. So, and that's what I'll be supplementing this appeal with.
Can I assume we do a site visit on something like this?
Yeah, I think we need to.
The parking is more than sufficient, the lighting is good, safe, I mean, it's a brand-new building, it's safe, it just, it checks all the boxes, except for its location.
Closest neighbor?
Closest neighbor, I don't, I believe is Saltzman.
The tree farm?
Yeah, right. I believe that's the case. But there's, there's an emergency access road that goes back to Knollwood, there's a neighbor back there, and then I guess it would be part of either Knollwood or Burger Road that overlooks part of Brookmead campus. But the campus itself is about seventy-five acres.
Is it a five oh one C three?
It is.
I'm on the board of Morton Library, and we struggle with that, you know, on a smaller scale. We have a nice hall there, you know, maybe it's good for ninety people. You know, as far as if somebody wants to do a birthday party for kids or this or that, I mean, you know, there's a minimal charge of eighty bucks or something like that. Oh, we have concerts there, and sometimes we charge, if they're going to charge people to come in, you know, ten percent or something, just to cover costs, like I said, what you're saying. So, but it's a difficult thing, I guess.
It is.
You're on a much bigger scale as well, so.
Yeah, but I appreciate your service on that board, and it gives you a nice perspective of some of the challenges that Brookmead has and, you know, some of the needs that this space can develop.
Is there any historical information we can get to find out what was meant by collective accessory uses?
So I have, I saw that the reservation was originally granted in twenty seventeen. I checked, there are minutes available for that. I haven't looked at them, but I have pulled them down.
But I think that might get off the board, to get a sense of what people.
And I've also asked Gretchen if she had the file for the original application, and Gretchen provided that to me, so I'll go through that and I'll share that.
Okay, great. That's good.
And I'll also provide whatever I happen to have in my possession. It might be too complicated, but.
That's fine.
Yeah, and I think the list of the events that have happened in the past, I don't know if the board would like this information. I think it could be helpful, but.
I think I want that information.
Maybe you could charge, whatever you charge would be, just, just so that we kind of just get a general idea of maybe how many people were in attendance.
Well, there's sort of several, but on the other hand, also, you have, you know, what have they been doing over the last several years and without incident? So I think that also.
And I'm assuming what you say without incident means no complaints?
No complaints, yeah. I, I think that I, I was involved with Ryanbeck Soccer for some time, and I think the only complaint that I've ever heard was when Ryanbeck Soccer, or it was actually Dutch League at the time, got these lights that you could bring out onto the field so when it started getting dark earlier. And some of the lights were pointed up into the homes that were on that ridge at Burger or Knollwood, I'm not quite sure which one it is. And I think someone might have been upset about that. Otherwise, I'm not aware of any, any complaints from neighbors or residents regarding these at Brookmead. appropriations.
And it's just this current situation before us and when you had Andrea Gallin, those are the only two.
Correct.
Okay, how has this been going on this far? How have you had events there?
So.
Approximately.
I would, I'll let Brian speak to that only because COVID, I know interrupted.
Yeah. Actually, our COVID baby.
Okay.
And I want to say 2019, 2020. It's been a blur honestly.
We can, we'll.
I mentioned it's like the discussion was back in 2017.
Yeah, that was in order for us to get the building permit and all those approvals. And then the construction went underway, they added parking and all that stuff, as well as, you know, 18,000 square foot building. But yeah, so I believe that it might have been completed in 19, 2019, 2019, 2020. We'll, we'll be sure to, you know, fill the record in at that.
All right. Any other questions concerns?
There's plenty of information in my mind to accept the, the application for the interpretation, so I'll make a motion that we do that. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and put this down until 17. And in the meantime, if you could give us that information, that would be great.
Certainly. When would you like all supplemental information by?
Say a week before, is that?
Is it a week or two weeks? What's usually the protocol?
You said a week with Mr. West, so is that even whatever?
Yeah.
A week would be appreciated with, I think, because two weeks would be July 1st, which is a little bit of a tricky time.
July 4th, yeah.
Yeah.
Could I work on?
It's a tiny 10 cent of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Exactly.
Just someone happy to have our team working, putting this work together for us.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but of course, the next SAS program, we'd love to have you guys in general, take a tour of the building.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be out there definitely for site inspection after the.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have some housekeeping here, again, on the cheat sheet. Council suggested that this is a type 2 action, 617.537, an interpretation of the existing code rule, regulation, sounds right? So I'll make a motion that we accept this application and deem it to be a type 2, 617.537. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no more phones, although Kim, you could talk about potentially, is the site approval, was this one or, it might be some?
I think that was West.
Was that just West?
West was that it might have to be referred to. Yeah, so no referrals. And for Michael West, that was that it might be the site approval. But yeah, no referral or need for interpretation.
I'll, I'll be the first to. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go through and I'll.
I'd like to get those minutes, I bet you they're very instructive.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through the minutes and then I'll pass them along so that we can see them.
All right, so those are the new applications. We do have on the public hearings, I know Mr. Williams contacted us and asked for some more time to get the measurements, which is fine, but if there's.
Yeah, and I think that he asked, Gretchen, please break it down, I think he, he just asked, he's still working with John Decker to get those final numbers. He asked to be on July and I believe he said if it didn't happen by July, the board can take him off the agenda indefinitely. He understands that if it's taken off indefinitely, he'll have to re-notice the public hearing, but it prevents him from having to reapply, pay any additional. So it's an undetermined time. So right now, I would say, Scott, we can continue it till July.
Right, so I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing on that until July 17th. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that brings us to the last item of business, which is case 1059, Nelson and Spilke. And I'm going to make a motion to reopen the public hearing. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we discussed, I was looking back at the meeting minutes from 15. We decided to continue the public hearing in order to accept a comment from neighbors and I think we got one comment from neighbors favorable.
Get the neighbor to the east.
Okay, on the addition side.
Yeah, on the addition side, yes. He just raised no complaints today.
Right. Any other questions, concerns? I'll be after this here. I actually showed up.
I didn't know that.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How did we, how did I know that?
You know, it was better because we got.
First scheduled one of the meetings, first.
Oh, sorry, so there was a bump in the road then?
It's been.
Well, not three bumps, there's one bump. Okay.
Anyway, no, no questions or concerns? So I guess I make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I did do the site inspection and the addition makes absolute sense. It actually makes sense being where it is because it gives symmetry to the house and the whole area, I don't think I can even see the neighbor's house. There's a lot of vegetation and it's on slot, so it made perfect sense. It seemed like a natural. Well, if anybody else has any other comments?
I'm familiar with the house.
Yeah.
Close to my house, so.
And it wasn't that big, it was staked out, it's not that big an addition really. All right. I know Kim put together a resolution.
Yes, I drafted a resolution based on the ZVA's previous comments at the last few meetings. And it was, I circulated it to you guys this past weekend and it was posted online and there are current copies available here. So the only thing I would add is that I left a blank for when the public hearing was closed, so I will just put right now that the public hearing was closed on June 19th.
And you also, you also talked about the site inspection too?
Yes, I have in there that site inspection was done on June 8th.
No, no, you and I discussed them, I said.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So Scott, if you'd like, you can just, unless there's any additional comments from the board, you can just read the now therefore be resolved.
I will do that, okay. So this is a portion of the resolution of the town of Rhinebeck's opening of appeals, case number 1059. And because of the publication and everything else that was done previously, I'm just going to read the last portion. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and on a reasoning described above as follows. Section 1, the ZVA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such agreement. The addition will serve as an art studio for the applicant who will blend in well with the existing home. The existing home is located centrally on the lot and located within the side yard setbacks on either side. Thus, any addition to this site would require an area variance. The addition is a reasonable request for the home and will blend in well with the home and within the residential neighborhood. The closest neighbor to the addition has raised no concerns. Section 2, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent that the proposed addition will be constructed in conformity with the application and plan submitted. Section 3, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck of any old fees and escrow deposits to a connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section 4, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. At 5, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. Any comments? Sounds good. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented and read. Do I have a second? Second. Okay, roll call.
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bryce?
All right. So I think that is it for our agenda. Anything else I can?
I don't think so.
All right, and it is 8:01.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it for our agenda and I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.